Good evening. Thank you for joining us, welcome. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, March 6. Please join in, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper? Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda is a proclamation for Women's History Month, March 2025. I'll come down front, and I would like all the women in the room to join me to read the proclamation. Come on up. Okay. Whereas in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on member states to proclaim a day for women's rights and international peace. And whereas women of every background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation, our state, and our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women lead and play critical economic, political, cultural, and social roles in our nation, state, and city, and have been at the forefront of major progressive social change movements. And whereas the 2025 theme for Women's History Month is moving forward together, women educating and inspiring generations. And whereas Women's History Month provides opportunities to recognize the progress in advancing women's equality, celebrate, celebrating the achievements of women and girls, and raising awareness of the social, economic, and political barriers still facing women, women and girls today. And whereas all societies should work together to secure the rights and full potential of all people in order to achieve lasting solutions to social, economic, and political problems. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month in the City of Marion, Iowa, and encourage all residents to observe this month, celebrate the achievements of women and girls, and support efforts to promote advancement toward equality for all people. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is our first public forum, which is a time that is set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If anyone is here to speak at a public hearing, of course, there'll be time for that during the public hearing. And all other comments could be reserved for the second public comment section at the end of the meeting. I would like to review the rules for public forum procedures. There are yellow cards at the end of the table. Anyone wishing to address the council should fill out the yellow card and turn it into the city clerk before you speak. Please do not approach the dais where the council is sitting. If you have handouts, please submit materials to the city clerk for distribution to the council. Once called forward, please step up, step up to the podium and speak into the microphone. The meetings are recorded. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, you're encouraged to, please address the council as mayor and members of council. All persons wishing to speak at the public forum will be provided with a maximum of five minutes to make comments. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is eminently threatening to any person or which incites violence or which is obscene. Please keep all comments pertinent to the matter or the subject matter, and please refrain from any disparaging comments toward, toward any individuals. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been made previously. And please do not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct which interferes with other people's ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in disruptive speech or behavior will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. We appreciate everyone's cooperation in adhering to these rules. At this time, we'll open the public comment section. And I do believe we do, we have some comments received outside the meeting. City clerk?
Yes, we received several comments. I'll show two here. Jeff Kaminsky wrote in opposition of the closure of the airport runway. And he requests additional community input. And then Benjamin Pritchard also wrote in opposition of the closure of the runway. We do have a few more comments, but those will be shown during the associated public hearing for the request for proposals.
Okay. So at this time, we'll ask for comments from members of the public. If you're here to address the council on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing, please come forward.
My name is Bruce Taylor. I own and operate Collins Road Theaters in Marion. Also, I'm a pilot and own an aircraft that's based at the Marion Airport. I wanted to ask the city council and all the other relevant people to not close the airport. I have only learned about the problem not long ago. So I'm not all versed on exactly what, what all has transpired. But the airport is important to the community and to the people that live in the community. And I would encourage you not to close the runway. There might be other options, like to find a commission or a group to transfer the, transfer the runway to or to Luxair, who has the FBO there. Any other options other than completely closing the airport? I think that would be a severe, a severe disjustice. That's not the right word, I'm sorry, a little bit nervous right now. And I would just encourage you not to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We've got a public hearing for that.
So.
The, the public hearing is for the request for a proposal. So if they're just in opposition of the closure of the airport, that would be during this section.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to speak?
Yeah, if you're speaking on, on that, the potential closure of the airport, then it will take these comments now. Is that what you're saying? Okay, thank you.
My name is Jean Hammel. I've been a resident of Marion since 1972. I'm a pilot, retired, physical therapist. I speak in opposition to closing, closing the Marion Airport, largely because Marion is a growing community, expanding. I have flown to neighboring airports such as Vinton, which has a wonderful airport, Independence, Monticello, Tipton. They all have good facilities. And I think Marion is a larger community. I'm not sure about that, but I'm not sure why our community that has such potential for growth would even think about not having an airport. I think for our growth and expansion of Marion, I think it's very important.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor and members of the council, good afternoon. My name is John Chargo. I'm here representing myself. When the public-private partnership was formed to develop the airport, I was pretty excited. At the time, I lived in Marion, but was commuting to Correville. And frankly, I was a little bit jealous of all the economic development activity that was happening in Correville. They're growing huge, huge business. And I was a little frustrated that Marion, it felt to me at the time, wasn't doing the same. Partly that, and then also it was a long commute, it kind of got old. Anyways, when the, when they, the city bought the airport or got involved with the airport, I was excited because it's like, oh, yay, we're, we're growing, we're growing business. And I've seen communities that have vibrant airports that they build industry around. And I was like, oh, yay, that's, Marion can have that, that's exciting. And it's been cool to see the Marion Airport grow over the past 10 years. I've seen jets out there, they've got the runways wider. It changed from a humble, small flight training airport to like a legit business airport. There's fuel out there, you know, new buildings. I saw there's even new roads out there, like ready for new businesses. And so it seems to me that airport's just like on the cusp of greatness. It's poised to be like kind of a huge economic development engine for the city. And it seems to me that closing it now is like the worst option. And if, I was trying to think of a good analogy, but going into March Madness, I mean, it, it seems like closing the airport now is like leaving a tied game at halftime. There's a lot of potential out there, and it'd be cool to see how that comes together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Keith Heepner, I'm the president of Experimental Aircraft Association for Eastern Iowa. I'm also here a person for helicopter operations up at AirVenture, which is a 650,000-person event that takes place every summer. We get a lot of traffic that flows through Eastern Iowa on its way there, and they're looking for fuel, and they're looking for places to stay, and they're looking for businesses to frequent. And closing Marion Airport, which I started flying at back in 1995, would be detrimental to that. But in addition to that, as John said, there's a lot of, a lot of things that are taking place currently that are really exciting. Cedar Rapids Airport is undergoing significant development. Cole College has a school out there now that's going to be doing a four-year program. Kirkwood College has an airframe and power plant mechanic school that's graduated its first class. Both those things are great for students in the area. A lot of education that takes place. They're expanding their airport. They're adding a new taxiway, a whole bunch of new hangar businesses. I know there's some history between the parties involved here. And that's unfortunate, and not having a good funding mechanism, I understand how that looks to the taxpayers. I'd be the first one standing up, not happy with that. But I think if we had a little bit more time, I only found out about this when I took over in January. But I think there's some opportunities to do some other things. Either other ownership opportunities or, as John indicated, other funding mechanisms to own the airport. It's just the timeline we're looking at was pretty short. So I think if, if Marion takes an approach where we can expand the educational opportunities for Marion taxpayers, for Marion students, maybe there's an opportunity for some of that growth here in Marion, just like there is over in Cedar Rapids. You guys are welcome to call me anytime if you got questions on EA's involvement. But we do Young Eagles events out at the airport. We cover eight different airports, a lot of youth activities, eight to 17-year-olds come out for, for airplane rides. We give them introduction to aviation that leads to their education, that leads to them staying in the community, Rockwell Collins, RTX, a lot of small development companies that do development of avionics. All takes place here. Those people need a place to live, and Marion would obviously be a good choice for them. So I'd ask you to reconsider whether it's, at a minimum, delaying the closure to give some of us an opportunity to come in and work with you a little bit more before you make that decision. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Daniel Dietz. I am, I technically live in Springville, but I'm five minutes from the airport. And I've been a part of this aviation community since the late 90s. I graduated from Marion High School in 2001. I think it's really fitting that we are invoking this honoring women in the month of March because one of the ladies that was standing up here, and she's going to be embarrassed that I do it, but Jan Walton and, and her late husband Perry built and, and took the Marion Airport from a farm field into what it is to this present day. And she took a high school kid that had a dream of flying and took me on my first flight lesson and instilled a dream within me that never died. And it took me a long time to get to my career. But I would say that what she did that day directly affected my path to where I am at present day. I, I work in the aerospace industry. I'm a big part of the community in the aviation realm. And I just want to advocate that sometimes we can't put a monetary value, like in one instance on, you know, we can't look at a runway and say, oh, it's $2 million. That's an expense. It's hard to put a monetary value on the impact it has in a community. Right behind her is Cole Norton, who she sold the flight school to. He was another young guy who had a dream of flying, just like me, you know, years later. And he goes there and he takes flight lessons. And he goes from the same young man with a dream of flying to running a business here in the community and giving back incrementally. And, and there, I, I didn't want to talk about it yet, but because of like where we're at on the cusp of potentially closing this, I have a dream of running a nonprofit that will work directly in Marion High School and then take STEM classes, take them through mechanics, take them through flight, and then funnel them into the Marion Airport to continue their education. So not just have them go on to Kirkwood and Cole College, but start them in high school where they're getting the groundwork to learn how to work on the airplanes, how to fly the airplanes, and, and fuel that fire. Because once, once, once a kid tastes the, the passion of flying, you can't get it out of them. It, you couldn't get it out of me. I know you couldn't get it out of Cole. And every single pilot here, you, you cannot kill it within a pilot. It's just a dream that changes us. And when people come alongside, and this community will rally around the Marion community, they will rally around young people that want to learn how to fly. And, and if you, if I could just sell that dream to you guys, that, that this is going to impact the community in a negative, very negative way if we close down this airport. We can't, we don't have the same freedom at Cedar Rapids. There's more security, there's more red tape. There's not, there's not good facilities for the local culture that you have at the Marion Airport. So I mean, I think lastly, I would just say that the flying, I'll just, I'll tell the story because I have no idea what's going to happen to this young girl. But we do a flying every, every June, and, and the community comes out. And I was volunteering as a pilot. Six-year-old girl, her best friend, and their dad jump in the back of the plane with me. And I take off, and this little girl starts screaming terrified. She is absolutely having a panic attack. And I just continued to fly the plane, and I just talked to her the whole time, and I just encouraged her, and I said, don't worry, I will have the airplane back on the ground within five minutes. Just keep talking to me, we're going to be okay. And I just started to point out stuff as we continued to fly over, over downtown Marion. And I just continued to calmly introduce her to something she had never experienced before. As I'm coming in to land, and again, this flight took less than 10 minutes. As I'm coming in to land, the little girl has now stopped crying. She's been looking around, and she sees that we're landing the airplane. And she goes, what are we doing? And I said, well, we're landing, aren't you glad that we're back on the ground? And she's like, no, I want to keep flying. So, so we took somebody that was completely terrified, and she went all the way into, wow, I can't believe I'm flying, and I don't want to stop. And, and so how do you put a monetary value on that? You, you can't. And again, I don't know if she'll become a pilot. I, I don't know, but if I planted enough seed in her in that moment that it's the same as what they did for me 20 years ago, again, I live here, I pay taxes here, and I want to keep investing in this community. And I think that we need to listen to some of the other people that are continuing to believe in what this airport has to offer, what this gentleman was talking about with, with, we, like, we are invested. We are emotionally, mentally, and, and monetarily invested in this airport, and we want to see it continue. So I, I just want to thank you guys to at least consider, if you've already made up your mind, maybe just consider and, and wait on it, delay, like, like one of the other gentlemen said. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeff Kaminsky. So one of my emails up here, but we didn't really talk about it. So I'm going to read it to you. It is with surprise and sadness that I take this opportunity to express my great concern and disapproval of this proposed action to close Marion Airport. The Marion Airport's been around since the 1950s. It is a unique aviation base in the state. Based on the Iowa DOT studies from 2022, the Marion Airport offered about $3 million in economic benefits to the community as is. This has surely exceeded in 2025, based on the expansions and offerings of the facilities that have changed since then. Marion Airport is currently home to a very busy Part 61 pilot training facility run by PNN Aviation, tens of aircraft, and offers unique potential that is just beginning to take off after a delayed runway expansion, the pandemic, the duratio, and other channel, challenges. The airport has grown over the past several years despite them. Besides the obvious impact to our locally-founded businesses based at the airport, the aviation-focused environment for employment in the region has changed wildly in the past two years. Kirkwood and Co. have both adopted new aviation-focused programs in the past two years, focusing on training to fill these high-demand and high-paying roles that we in this country and the state are in dire need of. Closing a popular airport in this environment, especially one with such a long history and such an active flight school, is absolutely inexplicable. Additionally, the city residents will pay the price for the rushed closure. There have not been significant public hearings on this, and community input is absolutely needed in order to move forward with such a big decision on a long-term community asset. The shutdown of the airport after spending over $3 million of city funds on the asset over the past decade, breaking a 20-year agreement with the Iowa DOT, and subsequently needing to repay a $400,000 grant to the state for the runway expansion is a decision that is nearly impossible to understand. Costs of the airport have been cited as the primary reason for the closure in conversations that I've had with council members and the city manager so far. I have never heard this argument related to roads in front of any business or residents within the city. Roads simply don't make money. This focus does not make sense to me from a numbers perspective either. The allocated cost per year based on the city budget is less than 0.5% of the city's overall budget. From what I'm told, only about half of that budget is actually spent, about $60,000 a year. Simply operating the airport for the next five years at that expense would be less expensive than grant repayment. And current operations of the airport require absolutely no funding from the public beyond basic maintenance of a nearly brand-new runway. Marion Airport is a valuable community asset that should absolutely not be discarded. What the airport needs is true support from the city council, true vision, and more tie-in with other departments within the city. There are numerous opportunities for school program tie-ins with Lynn Mar and Marion schools that could lead and feed Kirkwood and Co. programs as well. There are many possibilities with tying in cycling and walking trails. People come to watch aircraft take off and land all the time. Where I used to live, actually, back in Maryland, Baltimore-Washington International Airport has a very large cycling trail that was super popular. It's a, it's a great place. The trail goes right at the south, south end of the airport right now. There are many possibilities. It's truly a community asset that must be maintained. I've been flying out of Marion since 2008. I took my wife up to take photos, and the floods of 2008. Sorry? I also performed pilots-in-pause animal rescue flights out of this airport, transporting rescue animals across the country since 2009. For the past 10-plus years, in conjunction with PNN Aviation, we've also hosted the Cedar Valley Montessori School for Airport Tours every year. As a Marion resident, a pilot base of the Marion Airport, Collins aerospace engineer, and a current student at the Kirkwood Aviation Maintenance Program, I cannot stress enough the importance of this unique facility and the unique qualities of the Marion Airport. And I strongly urge council to work with the public to find a solution to this impasse. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else address council on this, or any, any matter that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing? Okay, we'll close this public forum and proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F1, Resolution 32278 through 32284.
Second. It hasn't been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, Resolutions 32278 through 32284. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstentions as follows. Items A1 through E1, Resolutions 32285 through 32287.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows. Items A1 through E1, Resolutions 32285 through 32287. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries with the mayor's abstentions.
Okay, then I will ask the mayor pro tem to continue with the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Sure. Next item is a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property in Collins Road Extension Urban Renewal Area, Marion Municipal Airport. This public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation?
We do, Your Honor.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. My apologies for not being physically present. I had scheduled time out of the office. And of course, this is a very important issue, so I wanted to make sure that I was able to attend at least virtually, so. Rachel, can you turn to the next slide, please? Thank you. This is the timeline that has brought us to today's point. I want to start with November 2021. During that time, the city council's airport subcommittee and myself met with Luxair officials to negotiate a restated and amended lease for the FBO operations. The focus of the, the lease negotiations were financial relief for Luxair, safety inspection program, the ability for a through-the-fence agreement, which was later approved, a form agreement was later approved by the city council in November of 2023. But then also to provide the city a year to conduct some research to determine its future involvement in the airport. Those, the lease agreement was approved, uh, April of 2022. Um, you can see on the screen, um, some of the, the high level, uh, points of the agreement. It provided a one-time payment to Luxair of $73,000 and then annual payments to Luxair of $74,682. Created the safety inspection requirement and then, as I mentioned, the year to research future involvement in the airport. Rachel, if you can go to the next slide, please. So to assist in that research, the city council appointed the airport visioning team. We refer to it as the ABT. This was comprised of residents, pilots, members of the Marion Municipal Airport Committee, uh, and two council members. Over the course of, uh, eight meetings, about 11 months, I believe, um, this group researched what would an operating structure look like? That would help inform the, what the operating budget would be. Um, that analysis determined that the, the operating budget would be break even at best. As part of the research, members of the, the committee toured other airports, uh, around the state. One of the things that was identified that many of those municipal airports have offsetting supplemental income from farming operations, which does not exist at Marion Airport. Uh, the, the, uh, ABT also, uh, reviewed the contemplated ALP from eight years ago to update pricing and look at what would be the basic necessities from that plan to ensure safety and, uh, integrated operations. Uh, from that, the, the group, uh, with the help of our financial advisor, did some analysis on what that would, what that impact would be on taxpayers as any improvements would require the issuance of debt. An important note as part of the research is the Marion, uh, airport is not within what's referred to as the NIPUS. Therefore, it does not qualify for any federal funding. The only funding outside of, uh, taxpayer, Marion taxpayer dollars, uh, would be or could be a competitive grant program run through the state of Iowa, um, which is annually appropriate, its annual appropriation is about $3 million, but that's competitive for all the, the, uh, airports across the state. In addition, all the financial analysis, the ABT reviewed the city's, uh, past community surveys to determine where the airport fell in the priorities compared to other, uh, priorities um, facing the, the, the community. And they also conducted a survey of the business community through, um, our, uh, partners at Medco. Uh, the results of that were no clear compelling need, uh, for business use of the airport. A lot of the comments referred to the proximity and convenience of CID. Rachel, can you turn the slide, please? Thank you. So the, the research, um, from the ABT was provided, um, to the city council. And over the course of the next, uh, several months, the city council, um, reviewed, discussed, had some follow-up questions that required additional research. And at the end, um, council's consensus was, uh, to exit the airport. On February 7th, 2024, Councilman Harper and myself met with representatives from Luxair, informed them of this, of the decision and asked what their future plans would be, um, under that scenario. And at that point, it was expressed that they would be interested in purchasing it and bring it back under private ownership. The dates on the screen, April 30th, 2024 through January 28th, 2025 represents the meeting dates that city officials and Luxair officials had, uh, to review the rationale for the direction from the city, identify issues that were important to the parties, uh, to, to accomplish that goal of transitioning to private ownership, establish a timeline to keep moving forward in advance of the June 30th, 2025 termination date identified in the lease, um, for the FBO operations. In October, October 4th, to be precise, um, Luxair officials provided two proposals to the city regarding the airport. Um, on October 18th and October 31st, the city responded, um, rejecting the proposal and providing the rationale for such, uh, response as well as providing, um, few counteroffers. In essence, the, the, the proposal from Luxair contemplated two scenarios, um, one of which was the city to donate the runway. Luxair was informed legally that the city is unable to do that. Uh, it must be sold for fair market value due to the fact that the runway is purchased with tax-exempt bonds. Um, under the other scenario, the city would continue to assume risk financially as well as liability risk. Um, and the city, that's challenging because the city does not have a dedicated revenue stream for the airport. Um, to date, the city has spent over $4.5 million, uh, but again, does not have a sustainable revenue stream to offset those costs and to continue operations. That was shared during those discussions. So in about November through January, um, those next meetings, uh, working with Luxair, we took some time to explore other concepts to, that we could fulfill our legal requirements and accomplish the goal of transitioning to private ownership. Throughout this entire process, um, with respect to the ABT research as well as the discussions over the last year plus with Luxair, um, city officials have been in regular contact with our partners at IDOT to inform them of the process, uh, what we've done, what we've learned, the direction that we're heading, as well as the obligations of the city. All of that work led us to the, to the RFP process, uh, which was a topic at our January 28th meeting with Luxair. Um, and that was communicate, the timeline that's on the screen now was communicated to Luxair on January 31st. Um, to date, we were, well, as, at the, as of the deadline of the RFP, so March 3rd, the city received zero proposal. Um, I do want to note for the record that we did receive an offer earlier today via email, uh, given the timing, it has not been reviewed to determine if it would meet the requirements of the RFP. I don't have anything further, uh, for the presentation, but happy to answer any questions from the council.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Um, the public hearing is still open. Uh, Rachel, did we have any comments from outside the, the meeting?
Yes, we received three comments in advance of the meeting. First one is, uh, Danielle Chargo, uh, wrote in opposition of the closure and then requested more time for additional proposals. Adam McGee requested more time for additional proposals to be submitted. And then Justin Cook requested more time for additional proposals.
Thank you. Um, is anybody here to speak on specifically the disposition of the property only? Meaning comments relating to the city's request for proposals for the private entity to purchase the property for continued use as an airport? Any other comments, um, generally about the airport? Some were already shared. There would be time at the end of the meeting for that, but if anyone's here to speak specifically about the agenda item, now is the time. Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed and we will move to the next agenda item.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to direct staff to proceed with the necessary requirements to close the Marion Airport runway by June 30th of 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to proceed with the necessary requirements to close the Marion Airport runway by June 30th, 2025. Is there any discussion or questions for Ryan? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I've been one of the individuals on that, uh, subcommittee and have been working on that for the last two and a half years. Uh, Ryan Waller, our city manager, went through the history of all of the communication between the city and Luxair. As you can see, that's been going on for a long time. There's been a significant amount of meetings. I'm guessing that many of you are seeing a lot of that history and the fact that there's been that much communication going on, many of you are seeing that for the first time, uh, perhaps tonight. I think it's unfortunate that if the runway were to close, that, uh, so many of you have planes and have, and feel like you're receiving a short notice on that. But again, this, the work on this particular topic has been going on for two and a half months. The matter of how and who got communicated over in the last several months was really, uh, up to Luxair to decide on how to do that. I would have to say that even if we initiate these procedures, uh, there's a number of steps involved in those procedures. And personally, I feel that if we were to receive, uh, a viable proposal, that we still have an opportunity to, uh, maybe make some changes in either the timeline and/or what we do with the runway.
Anyone else, Sarah?
I want to thank everybody who came tonight, um, to talk. It's, we've, we've, the subject has been on the agenda on different occasions throughout, and I know not everybody, like, just waits for Tuesdays and Thursdays to pull up the agendas to find out what's on the council agenda. I mean, I'm sure you all mark that on your calendar because it's such an exciting thing to look at. But, um, you know, it's, we, from the beginning, we've gone into this. All right, so I appreciate you all being here to talk because it's the first time we've had people in the room talking about the run, talking about the airport, despite all of these, the different times it's been on the agenda. Um, and I, I appreciate the, uh, respectful conversation that we're having on trying to figure out what's going on with it. In my almost four years on council, we have spent more time dealing with this issue than any others, any other issue in the community. Any other project, anything else we've dealt with, this has been the majority of meetings, extra meetings, conversations, anything else that's gone on with it. And from the very beginning, reassured that it was never looked at as we need to close this. It has been three and a half years of trying to find a way to keep it open and trying to find solutions and partners and how does this work? It's a conundrum of, of, um, of a setup because of the structure of it. It is, it is not to be found anywhere else. It's not private. It's not public. Um, we're next to a large airport which keeps us from federal grants, you know? You all know it. So we understand the dedicated, um, folks who are utilizing the airport and the potential for it. We, we've seen, you know, we can see it. The problem is, is, is it, things are, just are not lining up in how they can work and we keep trying to find a way to make them work. So I appreciate that everybody's here having this conversation and I think I want to reiterate with Councilmember Jensen said, um, there, at a certain time, you have to call it. You don't say, what are we going to do? And I think this has been an eye-opener a way for us to, maybe other people who haven't been involved in the conversation to try to find a way that this can potentially work. So I want to reiterate what he said, that viable options coming up. It has never been our intention that we just wanted to close it. And there's been a lot of work and I was not on the, the subcommittee and I say that only because my colleagues who were put in an exponential amount of time trying to work with different folks and find solutions. So we hear what you're saying and, and I don't want you to think coming here is fruitless effort because, um, I learned quite a bit from your conversation. So, um, thank you for that and whichever way this goes, it's not going to be a set piece and the conversation's still open if things come forward. Speak for me about the Collins, but.
Anything else?
Yeah, I had a few things. So I was, uh, part of the committee as well too. So just to reiterate what, uh, Steve and Sarah have had, I'm not going to repeat those because they're all, those are all still the same items. Um, there's a lot of details that have gone into this and as well, I appreciate everybody coming in. Unfortunately, it's, I feel as if though a lot of people just finally caught up with actually what's going on. These ABT meetings that we held back last year, they were public. Um, the recordings are online. We've done, uh, all the announcements. We tried to do everything that we could to attract the attention of what I feel are the tenants, um, to this location, which is mainly what's represented here tonight. But there's a lot of things that went into place, uh, back when the airport was acquired under the private-public ownership. Uh, there was the NIPUS. Those of you that are pilots know what NIPUS is. You know what I'm talking about. Um, the laws changed shortly after that, making no funding available back to the city as a revenue stream coming in. So people have to realize, we realize the economic impact that it has. It is difficult to measure it, but there are no fiscal dollars that actually are attributed. We have no fuel sales. We have no rentals of properties, uh, any of the, the buildings out there. We just merely own the runway. When a runway is owned by a municipality, we are under different governances and laws that we must maintain, uphold, and we have to bring into the municipality's processes. The approach, the landing zones, all of those things are dealt with differently underneath the ownership of a municipality. So the conversations have always been, what can we do to keep the airport open? Unfortunately, we've gotten to the point where we, as a city, can no longer keep the runway. So there's a big difference in this whole process of how this has gone. That's where the public-private process has really gotten confusing to people in understanding, we just own the runway and what would have been the old FBO building site. The rest of it is all owned under private ownership where the city has no authority of. In addition to that, um, it, it's just important, you know, we are at this stage, um, when we are looking at major, a major item like this, these have to be backrolled into a timeline. So as Steve had mentioned, um, these are just the initial proceedings to start the process. It doesn't mean that anything couldn't change along in here, should that desire be, be brought up. But it's, it's very important that everybody understand where we're currently at in this particular position. So, again, just want to appreciate everybody's reaching out. I'm sure there's a lot of conversations going on. Uh, reach out to your respective individuals, um, if you are tenants out there. Um, and, and as well too, there's a lot of resources, a lot of data and research out here. So, um, again, just want to kind of reiterate a little bit of that. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. All those in favor of directing staff to proceed with the necessary requirements to close Marion Airport runway by June 30th, 2025, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. The motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the disposal of real property consisting of the city block founded by 10th and 11th Streets and 5th and 6th Avenue in Marion, Lynn County, Iowa. And this is the former library site. Uh, the public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation for this?
Your Honor, I'll take this one as well.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Uh, not, uh, we don't have a, a formal presentation, but more of just kind of what this, what this entails. The, uh, the, the city, um, led by the city council has done an exhaustive, um, search for a partner, uh, with respect to the old library site. Conducted an RFP process, um, followed that through until the, um, uh, identified, uh, potential partner backed out. Um, and then we continued to meet with, um, and, uh, explore, uh, possible partnerships with developers that shared the same value system and approach to, uh, the Marion way of dreaming big, uh, with respect to this important piece of property. Um, but also take the time to make sure that we, uh, in the words of Mayor Abou Osley, um, we get one shot to get this right. And, um, so what is before the council is an option agreement. What this does is it, um, signifies that, uh, the city and the Gronin Group, which is a development firm out of Dubuque, um, are going to work together to craft a vision, to, um, analyze that vision for cost, um, and work together, um, to, uh, come up with a proposed development agreement for that site. Um, so this is an interim step, um, to solidify this relationship. Um, the deadline is, I believe, October 31st of 2025 is, is the main milestone with the ability to extend it to May 31st, 2026 to allow for, um, the process to play out to conceptualize the vision, um, and go through the necessary steps to analyze, um, what would the impacts be? The financial, um, cost of, of this development, um, ensure a time for engagement from the community. So, uh, this is an interim step. So this is an interim step. The city does have the ability to both parties have the ability to exit this. It does not bind us. It just simply states that we're going to work together to craft a vision for the site and strive to memorialize that in a development agreement, which then would have to go through a separate approval process through the city council, including a public hearing.
Good. Thank you, Ryan. Rachel, have we received any comments on the side or outside of the meeting?
We have not.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in favor or in opposition of this item? Now would be the time. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed and we will move to the motion.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve Resolution Number 32288, approving an option agreement with Gronin Development, Inc. Regarding the disposal of real property consisting of the city block bounded by 10th Street and 11th Streets and 5th and 6th Avenues in Marion Lynn County, Iowa, and this is the former library site.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32288, approving an option agreement with Gronin Development, Inc. Regarding the disposal of real property consisting of the city block bounded by 10th and 11th Streets and 5th and 6th Avenues in Marion Lynn County, Iowa, and this is the former library site. Is there any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, I see that this item requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
All right, that's been approved unanimously. Next item is a public hearing on a development agreement with Hoth Flats LLC. Public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation on this one?
Yes, your honor. This this is for property located at 801 10th Street. There on the map, you can see the red marker is the location. And then if you want to advance. This is a project that includes 24 housing units and has received a grant from the state, the Community Development Block Grant for Disaster Relief. The incentive being offered in the development agreement is tax increment finance with a 10-year 75% rebate and a maximum of $450,000 with a timeline of completion by June 30th, 2026.
All right, thank you. Have Rachel, have we received any comments on this item outside of the meeting?
We have not.
Thank you. If anyone is here to speak for or against this specific agenda item, now is the time. Seeing no one come forward, the public hearing is now closed and we will move to the resolution.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve Resolution Number 32289, approving development agreement with Hoth Flats LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32289, approving development agreement with Hoth Flats LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 32289, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve ordinance number 25-03, establishing Chapter 214 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding mobile food trucks. Initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-03, establishing Chapter 214 of the Marion Code and ordinances regarding mobile food units. This is the initial consideration. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Seeing none, motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the 2025 HMA resurfacing project. This public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, your honor. So this is our annual HMA overlay project. For this year, the roads involved are Twixtown Road from Cedar Rapids Limits to Marion Limits, Hillview Drive from 5th Street to 22nd Street, Valleyview Drive from 15th Street to 22nd Street, 25th Avenue from Indian Creek Road to 27th Street, Meadowview Drive from East Post Road to South 15th Street, South 15th Street from Grand Avenue to Daleview Drive, 8th Avenue from 6th Street to 10th Street, and Winslow Road from the Timber Bridge and extending to the newer paving to the north and to the south. We did receive one bid for this project from L. Pelling at $1,522,150.20. It was 100.6% of the engineer's estimate. There's a detailed breakdown in the packet. We will monitor this as we re-overlay portions of the street. We'll peel them up and we can actually see where that's at. And we'll monitor it to make sure that we stay within our budget for this project. And I can let the public speak and then answer any questions, City Council.
Have we received any public comment outside of the meeting, Rachel or Mike?
We have not.
All right, thank you. If anyone wants to speak in favor or in opposition of this item, now is the time to do so. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed and we'll move to the motion.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the 2025 HMA resurfacing project as follows. Resolutions Number 32290 and Resolution 32291.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the 2025 HMA resurfacing project as follows, Resolution Number 32290 and Resolution 32291. Is there any discussion or questions? Steve?
Yeah, Mike, would I know that we do this HMA project every year, but could you remind the 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 public and everybody on the selection process on which streets get overlaid?
Sure. So what we do is the we actually have our streets driven every two years. So the first two years, let's say, is driven by the DOT. They hire that out to a third-party contractor. In between, every four years, the CNPO, the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, actually pays a third party to come in and do the metro area. So every two years we get new data and basically they rate all of our streets from zero to 100, assigning a PCI or payment condition index to all of our streets. We then have a program called DTIMs that we put all this data in and we say we want an ideal PCI of 62 or whatever that value is. And then it spits out, these are the streets that you need to do complete reconstructions on. These are the ones you should do the overlay and kind of lays out that program. We then take a look at things like water main, storm sewer, sanitary sewer. If there's other future projects happening, we then use engineering judgment to then pick those streets, but we start with the computer model. Because, for example, if it says to do five north-south streets that are all next to each other, we obviously have to have a north-south street that is functioning. So we have to use engineering judgment with that as well. So we start with computer data program and then based on our work program and other projects going on, then we manipulate it. Same thing with our pavement patching program, which is also out for bid right now. So that's how we come up with those streets.
I think it's important for everybody to know who may be listening to this that all of these decisions are data-driven.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, those in favor of approving the project calendar regarding the 2025 HMA resurfacing project, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the 2025 First Avenue Reconstruction Project. The public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation on this?
Yes, sir. So this project is First Avenue. It starts just west of 15th Street and will be just east of 22nd Street. And it also includes 22nd Street all the way to just south of 3rd Avenue. This is a multi-year project. For this, we're replacing the infrastructure that goes with it as well. The low bid came in from Rachi Construction at $1,747,847.27, which was 88.9% of the engineer's estimate. We are recommending that we proceed with the plans and bids.
Have, has anyone received any comment from outside the meeting?
Nope.
We have not.
All right, thank you. If anyone wants to speak in favor or opposition of this agenda item, now is the time to do so. Seeing no one stepping forward, the public hearing is now closed and we'll move to the motion.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve project calendar regarding the 2025 First Avenue Reconstruction Project as follows. This will be Resolutions 32292, adopting final plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of the cost regarding the 2025 First Avenue Reconstruction Project. This also includes Resolution Number 32293, awarding bid, authorizing approval of the contract bonds insurance with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2025 First Avenue Reconstruction Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,747,847.27.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the 2025 First Avenue Reconstruction Project as follows. Resolution Number 32292 and Resolution Number 32293. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the project calendar regarding the 2025 First Avenue Reconstruction Project, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve ordinance number 25-02, approving amendment to Section 122-9A of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to riding on sidewalks, and this is the second consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-02, approving the amendment to Section 122-9A of the Marion Code and ordinances relating to riding on sidewalks. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve ordinance number 25-04, approving amendment to Section 313-10.6E of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to prohibited parking, and this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-04, approving amendment to Section 313-10.6E of the Marion Code and ordinances related to prohibited parking. Is there any discussion? Do we have a presentation for this? Sorry, have have I am I supposed to ask that for the ordinances?
No.
I didn't think so. I just saw Mike standing up there.
So just for clarification for anybody that's hearing or that is here in the audience, the TAC or Traffic Advisory Committee, as we were discussing other intersections and issues that we were having, as it's defined, it just says intersection within or 10 feet of an intersection that you can't park. So when we look at a picture like this of a typical intersection, we were having a hard time between the group of us, what is an actual intersection? So we wanted to make this more clear. And so what we've done is instead of saying it's at point A, which what a lot of people believed was the the intersection. So a car could technically park here and still be partway in the intersection, but they're not within that point A. The radii here always varies depending on the different street classifications. So if you have a residential and a collector's street, that's going to be a 35 or 45-foot radius depending on the the streets of those trucks can make those corners. The smallest tend to be 15, 20, or 25. So if if we're only saying 10 foot from this, and this is a 25-foot radius, then that poses some issues for not only prior apparatuses, garbage trucks, snow trucks, any large piece of equipment to be able to make that maneuver into that street. So to make it less ambiguous, we're saying measured from the end of the radius or EOR, which is point B. So that's the point where the radius stops and the straight line begins on the street. Another diagram to kind of help with that, here's a paved street. Typically, there's a jointing that's blocked out here. So when the paver runs, say, east-west, they actually box out that area that's hatched so that they can build that radius and hand pour that section of it because the paver only goes in a straight line. Similarly, here's an actual street. It's hard to see it, so I highlighted it, but this would be the end of radius here, or this would be the end of radius here. It's typically where about that stop sign is. So you can actually see the street blades here that has the stop sign on it. So you can see it lines up with that pretty good. But on the other side of the road, there is no stop sign. So we can't just say at the stop sign because there's only a stop sign on one side of the road. So again, we're just trying to clear it up. We'll have to do a lot of education, not only for the public, but also the police department. We'll start off with warnings before we start issuing citations. It does take three readings to get this passed, but we just want to make it more clear rather than being more vague in our code.
Thanks. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-04, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve Resolution Number 32294, approving support for an application to Representative Hinson for FY26 Community Project Funding for the Tower Terrace Road Project from one mile west of Highway 13 to Highway 13 Project.
Second.
Been moving and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32294, approving support for an application to Representative Hinson for FY26 Community Project Funding for the Tower Terrace Road Project from one mile west of Highway 13 to Highway 13 Project. Any discussion or Mike, you have something?
Yeah, so just a brief discussion. This was not on the council agenda Tuesday, but because this is due next week, we wanted to go ahead and and get this in front of council. So the portion that we're talking about, it's the green line. So starting at this section line that lines up with the the school street to the south and then going all the way to 13. We met as a metro community to figure out what section of Tower Terrace did it make the most sensible buy for? With Marion already having a bridge with CPF funding being Albernat Road, we didn't think another bridge would be a good idea just for the scoring criteria. And then this is actually inland county, so partnering with Lynn County to do this application and having two people on the application versus one also makes it a highly scoreable project. Congressman Hinson gets 15 projects per year that she selects out of all the projects she gets. She then has to attach those to a bill. That bill then has to be passed and there has been appropriations after that. So this is just step one of many steps, but similarly, we were able to get money for Albernat Road and the metro was able to get $5 million for her to get the preliminary engineering, the right-of-way, and the environmental clearances from 13 to 380 on all sections that were not already built or designed. So this will help score that as well. And she has actually asked last year why there wasn't a Tower Terrace application in there.
Good. It's good. Any discussion or questions?
I'd say discussion, but thank you for continuing to work on this important project. I know it's like hiccup after hiccup in different places. We run into obstacles that are beyond our control with costs, but appreciate this is long time in the making. We keep talking about this and people are watching it. So appreciate the keeping this on the front burner. Is this something that you're going that it requires community support letters and pieces with that, or is this strictly just between us?
Yeah, so we did have a debrief with Hinson's office. The good thing is with all of our applications we've done with Build, which used to be Raise, Raise, and then with MPDG, it was actually asked by our consultant, can we use the applicant, all the letters of support that we used in our last application, which was around 60 with this application? And the answer was yes.
It's good. Saves you some time.
The only question I would have is like a process question, just because I don't fully understand. So with this project funding, if this is a project that is chosen, is that project funded to just a certain amount or what's what's the amount of funding that?
Yeah, so when we did the Tower Terrace total ask, at the time, the limit was $1 million. That was our ask. She actually found out that others got more, so she actually took our ask of $1 million from the metro and gave the metro $5 million. So she automatically just upped our ask. For this, we would ask for seven, which right now is the current max. The estimate for this is 9.5, which is about 74% of the project. For most of these projects, unless there's a special circumstance, it's an 80-20 split, meaning the federal government pays for 80, we pay for 20. So if there's an option that she can raise that amount to get us to the 80-20, she may do that, but our ask is for 7 million, which is the max that has been released, at least for us. Doesn't mean that in the federal government, things don't change.
Thank you. That clarifies that for me. Is there any other discussion or questions for Mike? All right, seeing none, those in favor of approving Resolution Number 32294, approving the support for an application to Representative Hinson for the FY26 Community Project Funding for the Tower Terrace Road Project, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries. That brings us to our next public forum. This time is set aside for comments from the public. Please understand that the city council will not take any action on these comments at this meeting due to requirements of the open meeting laws, but may do so at a future meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on any topic?
Mayor and council, Keith Heebner again, EA. Just want to thank you all for your efforts over the past two years. I understand that was a difficult process, and my apologies for not being more involved till recently. And I do thank you for being open to modifications if we can bring a solution that may benefit all. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, that brings us to council comments. Steve?
Yeah, two things are happening in the next two weeks. Next week, we obviously have warmer temps in the 60s. And in two weeks, we have spring break. So look out, that means a lot of more activity with kids running around. That's it.
Sarah?
Because everybody would say, since the mayor's not here, Tuesday's the state of the city. And I think there's some record numbers on that, so it'll be fun to see. Thanks for all of you who I know participate in the planning for this big event. So thank you for all that and looking forward to celebrating all the great things that are Marion.
Thanks, Will. Randy? All right, with that, I'll just second what Sarah said. State of the city is on Tuesday. We're hoping to see some big numbers. Thank you to everyone that's involved in that. And I know the, the mayor's been grinding really hard on his speech and looking forward to seeing another one. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody.